Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we start with our proclamation, I mean, we start with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
This bar heads, please. Heavenly Father, we pray for the agenda set before us today. Lord, please give us assurance of what we would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in the city of Mission, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation. Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor Counsel. Good afternoon. Today, we do have the honor of having Pastor Jesus V. Jimenez here with us, as well as his wife, Sarah Jimenez. And the proclamation reads as follows. "Whereas Jesus V. Jimenez was born on January 1st, 1936, in San Antonio, Texas, and graduated from Instituto Biblical Magdalen on April 11th, 1960, with a diploma in Theological Studies. Whereas Pastor Jimenez was ordained Minister of the Assemblies of God in 1959, and was also assigned to the following churches: Temple Emanuel in Ciudad Victoria-Tamaulipas; Misión Asambleas de Dios in Aurora, Illinois; Misión Asambleas de Dios in McCamey, Texas; and Casa del Alfaro in Monday, Texas. Whereas Pastor Jimenez married Sarah Camino on March 18th, 1961. And whereas Pastor Jimenez and his wife Sarah arrived in Mission, Texas on August 20th, 1969, where he became pastor of Iglesia El Divino Redentor. Whereas Sarah Jimenez was born on February 17th, 1943, in Coahuila, Mexico, and is the daughter of pastors Jose En Solidad Camino of the Assemblies of God in Mexico. She graduated from Instituto Biblical Illiam in Mexico City, Mexico, in 1959, and was ordained Minister of the Assemblies of God, serving as Women's Ministries Director in the West Rio Grande Valley Section of the Gulf Latin American District from 1976 to 1983. Whereas Pastor Jimenez served as Secretary Treasurer of the Midwest District and Presbyr of the West Rio Grande Valley Section of the Gulf Latin American District of the Assemblies of God, and served as a professor of Theological Studies at Escuela Biblica Betel in Far Texas. Whereas Pastor and Sarah Jimenez made two missionary trips to Nicaragua in 2003 and in 2005. Whereas Pastor Jimenez and his wife Sarah are the proud parents of children Reyna Esther and Obed. Whereas Pastor Jimenez is a current radio host of La Voz del Divino Redentor program on Marinatha Radio, 97.9 FM in Mission, Texas. And whereas Sarah has served as pastorial spouse, housewife, local and sectional Women's Ministries leader, Sunday School teacher, and current radio host of the Reflexiones para el Dario Vivir program on Marinatha Radio, 97.9 FM in Mission, Texas. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby congratulate Pastor Jesus V. Jimenez and Sarah G. Jimenez for their dedication and service to the Iglesia El Divino Redentor, Asambleas de Dios, and this community for the past 50 years, and wish them a happy and blessed retirement, proclaimed on this the 27th day of November, 2017."
Okay. We do need a motion to approve this proclamation.
Second.
Do have a second, although in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We now present this proclamation to Mr. Jimenez.
We do have Mr. Jimenez. Pass it to Mr. Jimenez.
We can play a few words a little bit?
Many blessings, sir. Enjoy your retirement.
All of these?
You are getting between them now. Between?
Okay.
Okay. And everybody just... Okay. Okay. Over here, in three, two, one. Okay. Please give us your last words.
Thank you.
Okay. Please give us your last words.
Ay, que todos salen, señor, porque yo no hablé.
Andale. Uno.
Jamás en mi vida imaginé una ceremonia como esta. Nosotros, los que trabajamos en la predicación del evangelio, esperamos nuestra recompensa cuando lleguemos al cielo a la presencia de Dios. Así que para mí es un gran honor la gran distinción que ustedes hacen con nosotros en esta ocasión. Que Dios les bendiga. Muchas gracias a todos. Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias.
We have a next item. It is a presentation of Mrs. Mission and Court by Ms. Garza.
Mayor Counsel, good afternoon again. I have the honor to present to you Ms. Mission, Ms. Mission Team, and Ms. Mission Junior Team. Ms. Mission, we have Ms. Bianca Medina. Bianca, if you can please come up.
Good afternoon, City Mayor, City Manager, City Members, and citizens of the community. My name is Bianca Medina, and I am delighted to represent our great City of Mission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Counsel, we now have Ms. Mission Team, and that's Brianna Ramos.
Good evening. I'm Brianna Ramos, and I'm excited to represent my community more now that I have a title.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, we have Ms. Mission Junior Team, Andrea Chapa.
Hi, I'm Andrea Chapa. I'm really honored to represent our community, and I'm really excited to help out our community this coming year.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a resolution, or?
No, not right now, but...
We'll take a picture?
And we're getting on two weeks from now? Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, sweetie. Congrats.
Thank you.
Two on one side and one on the other, Mayor.
Let me hear one here. We have now a report from the Mission Chamber of Commerce.
In terms of recent events, on November 15th, we hosted a business workshop titled Building Your Online Presence. In total, we had 17 members in attendance. Next, on Thursday, November 16th, we hosted our bi-monthly Business Mixer. The event honored HEB and Burt Ogden for their Hurricane Harvey relief contributions. In total, we had approximately 100 people in attendance at Cimarron Country Club. In terms of upcoming events, tomorrow, we are hosting a ribbon cutting from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. for Dr. Norma Cavassos, and specifically her business, Infinite Love. The event will be held at her location, which is 2121 East Griffin Parkway, Suite 7, here in Mission, Texas. Following that, the Chamber is excited to relaunch the Go Mission Shop Local program. In light of that, we are having a relaunch press release event on Wednesday, November 29th, at 4:30 p.m. The event will take place at the Seed Building, located right here off of North Bryan Road. We're expecting members, our Board of Directors, and certainly support from the City Council and City of Mission as well. So I certainly invite you to that. Following that, on December 5th, we're having a ribbon cutting for one of our newest members, which is Hector E. Rivera, who's an enrolled agent. The event will take place at Mr. Rivera's business, which is at 1723 East Griffin Parkway, Suite A, here in Mission, Texas. On December 7th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., we're hosting a Mission Holiday Christmas Social at one of our members' locations, at Waterford Gardens Assisted Living Center. It's certainly going to be a good, fun time, so I certainly invite you to that as well. And then lastly, I'm excited to announce, on December 8th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the Chamber, in partnership with the Winter Texans Times, is hosting a Winter Texan Welcome Back Event. The event is free and will be hosted at the Market Square next to the Chamber of Commerce. Any questions?
Any questions? Not?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Department Report. So in your packet, if you all have any questions, don't hesitate to ask now.
We are on...
Okay.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the Department Report, so those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We have citizen's participation. Do we have anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? Anybody that would like to address the council? If not, we are going to go into our public hearing, and we'll start with 1.1A. Mr. Acevedo.
Good afternoon, Mayor Counsel. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for discussion and action amending various portions of Chapter 86 with regards to signage. And if the council is inclined to approve the sign code changes or amendments, an adoption of an ordinance is going to be required. On November 15th, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider amending various portions of Chapter 86. And I believe you were given a handout which kind of illustrates some of these key changes that are being proposed to the sign codes. The sign codes are to address federal requirements on signage, and technological advances on billboards, and to allow for off-premise signs. Some of the key changes to billboards is that we will now be allowing billboards that have LED faces, and we're also decreasing the size of billboards from 484 square feet to 378 square feet along secondary arterials. And this is due to the fact that most of the smaller, medium-sized billboards that are placed along secondary arterials are 10 and 1/2 by 36 feet. So the 378 square feet complies with the industry standards. With regards to temporary signs, some of the changes are that we will now be allowing temporary signs 120 days before a scheduled election. And 60 days prior to an election, you will be allowed to have signage up to 40 square feet. So initially, in the first 60 days, you'll be allowed a smaller sign, and then 60 days within the election, you'll be allowed to put your larger signs, which are typically your 4x8s, and up to 40 square feet. We're also recommending that these signs be placed 25 feet away from each other during the election period, and that we also are allowing temporary signs to be permitted with listings of properties that are for sale or rent when the property is open to the public. And we're also recommending that no sign or temporary sign exceed 40 square feet. With regards to off-premise signs, this will allow businesses to advertise within 800 feet on a nearby commercially zoned property, and we're also recommending that there shall be no off-premise sign within 400 feet of another off-premise sign. These changes were approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, staff and City Manager are recommending removal of the provision allowing temporary signs at any time. As the revised sign classifications addresses those instances where the temporary sign may be placed, staff is also recommending that we restrict the size to 4 square feet on those temporary signs that are placed within the first 60 days of the 120-day period prior to an election. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Any questions?
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
On the number three 25-foot interval during the election period, is that the same sign, or two different signs can't be closer than 25 feet?
It can be the same sign. It could be a different sign. We're just asking for 25-foot spacing. So if your lot has 100 feet of frontage, you can have three signs.
Oh, all right.
Three different signs, or three signs are the same?
It can be different signs, as long as they're under the 40 square feet.
Any sign?
I'm talking about different candidates.
It can be different candidates, yeah.
Up to three?
It's just...
If you have six candidates, you can't display all six of them.
It's just temporary signs, whatever the nature, political, real estate...
We have six candidates that are running. We can only display three signs.
Only three signs.
Well, depending on the size of your frontage... Yeah. Most of them are 125.
As long as you comply with a 25-foot spacing, if you have a 300-foot lot, you can put all six candidates.
Our R1 lots pretty much is three signs.
That's correct. That's correct.
Mr. Acevedo, can I have a more specific, in reference to what Planning and Zoning approved, and what staff and City Manager are wanting to change?
The only change that staff and City Manager are making is that there was a clause in the original ordinance, and it's actually in your handout, that specified that temporary signs were permitted at any time. That's the component of the amendment that we're removing. We're limiting to 120 days prior to an election, instead of any time.
I thought we had already discussed this. Okay, so like me right now, if I would like to put a sign in front of my yard, it's my property. I couldn't do it until 120 days before any time something's to happen.
That's correct.
Prior to election date?
Prior to the election date, that's correct.
And when does this go into effect?
It would be...
May of next year?
That's up to the council.
Yeah.
That would be up to the council.
What does the ordinance say right now? Effective date? I guess the question is, is it going to impact the next city election, or is it going to, are we going to wait till after the city election? Nope, so we've got to do it right now.
Right.
If it's approved, it has to be effective today.
Right. If it's approved today, it would be effective at the time of approval.
Which is when?
Today, sir. If it's approved today, it would be today.
I mean, I'm okay with that, because it does level the...
Right. And what we looked at, one of the things that we looked at to, when you looked at election signs, is that if you look at the dates, January the 17th, City Secretary, correct me if I'm wrong, but January the 17th is when somebody can put in for...
File.
To file for an office, right? And so if you look at the dates, at the time that you sign off as a potential runner, you have the ability, as of that date, to go ahead and put up a sign.
But it's got to be a yard sign.
It's got to be a yard sign. The first 60 days, Mayor Counsel, is just a yard sign, which is no larger than a 2x2.
And not to exceed...
After... I'm sorry, sir.
And not to exceed the frontage.
Right. And after the first 60 days, and then you can do anything above the 2x2, no larger than your 40 square foot.
How about, how about if we have multiple elections, like the county's running an election, and the Democrats are running a primary, and the Republicans are running a primary? Here around the corner comes a school board election, you know? Does it go by election, the number of signs, or it goes back to the same original question that I asked originally? Is three signs per candidate, per election, or three signs, candidates for all elections that are called?
It goes by the scheduled election. Right.
Every election is one campaign. Yes. Different from the other one. You want to...
Yeah. Mayor and Counsel, just with regards to the types of questions that we're receiving, I don't know if the council wishes to go into executive session to address the legal requirements that were set by the Supreme Court, and which is why, the reason for these changes. If the council wishes to do that, we can in fact do that if there are legal questions with regards to those requirements.
I have a question on the removal, so I think that's a legal thing.
Well...
If it's a legal question, we can go into executive session to address that. Yes, ma'am?
You want to go into executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We need a motion to go into executive session.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go into executive session, although in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We'll read right back. Mayor, I want to make a motion to reconvene and to reopen our public hearing where we left off.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to reconvene and to go and open the, what, the...
Public hearing, Mayor.
Public hearing. Although in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We'll go back to item 1.1, no?
1.1A, yes, sir.
And the adoption of ordinance, are we all in confirmance with what we talked about? And to adopt ordinance 4576 is presented to us?
Do we need to close the...
Mayor, I think we need to close the public hearing.
Public hearing needs to be closed.
Okay.
We would need to close the public hearing, Chris, ma'am.
We need a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second, although in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We closed the public hearing. Now we need to recommend the adoption of ordinance 4576. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 4576, although in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We'll go on to item B.
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for rezoning of Lot 1, Jessica Pedraza subdivision. The property is owned C1, and the request is to rezonate to a C3 general business. The applicant is Jose Pedraza, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On November 15th, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located along the north side of East Griffin Parkway, between Orange Avenue and Lilac Avenue. The surrounding zones include Single Family Residential to the north, C2 Neighborhood Commercial to the east, and Single Family Residential to the east, as well as R1 Single Family Residential to the west, and C1 Office Building to the west. To the south, you also have Single Family Residential. A petition reflecting 19% of the property owners just west of the property along Orange Street was received by the city. We did verify those signatures, and they were all citizens that live on the east side of Orange Avenue. And some of those concerns was that there was going to be noise and additional traffic because of the higher usage of a C3. The board unanimously recommended denial of the C3. However, they did approve a lesser C2 use at this particular location. Staff is also recommending denial of the general C3 request, but is in support of the neighborhood commercial C2 zoning, as is our City Manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
The recommendation is for denial?
Denial of C3, but approval of C2.
Okay. Does everybody understand that?
Yes, sir.
We need a motion.
I'm waiting to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve denial on C3, but approval on C2, on both items? Both recommendations, Planning and zoning, and staff. Although in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Ordinance number?
Ordinance 4577, I'm sorry. So we do have a motion?
Mayor, it is a public hearing, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, boy. That was a mumble. It's a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any objections to what we're doing?
Mr. Pedraza is here. Mr. Pedraza, nos es gustar decir unas palabras. Lo que está haciendo, este, lo que estamos recomendando, no es el C3, pero el C2. Básicamente, lo que recomendó el, la mesa directiva de planeos y zonas. Este, si entiende lo que estamos tratando hoy en esta junta?
Sí, claro.
Okay.
So if we can add the C3, let's go with C2.
Explique lo que va a tener que poder hacer en C2.
Okay. Do you have the list of items that he can do on C2?
In a C2, puede tener una tienda, puede tener unas oficinas, un gimnasio, un daycare, unos dry cleaners, hasta un restaurante si se lo prueban con un conditional use permit, con un condicional permiso. So si le abre un poquito más las puertas a lo que puede hacer ahí.
So what is his plan?
Dr. Caña quiere saber qué es, ya que hace ya tiene unos planes para...
No, the only thing, I want to have more options to see what I can do, so...
We've been very limited to what we can do, so what we want to do is broaden, you know, pretty much what we, you know, what we can do there.
Right.
Are you okay with a C2, or?
We're actually hoping to get a C3, just, there's not something exactly that we do have in mind, but there's a property that we've had for the last seven years that, it's been vacant.
And you want to put it...
Ah, yes. So it's been, I mean, seven years and just taxes, I mean, let alone this...
Yeah. You want to put it to use?
Yes, sir.
That's fine. We like that around here.
I'm waiting to approve. Okay. Can we do a motion, or do I have to wait?
I think we need to close the public hearing.
Okay.
C2 was denied?
The C2 is being recommended.
C2 was denied by Planning and Zoning, and the recommendation to deny here also. So...
The C3, Mayor. To deny the C3 and approve the C2.
The C2.
And Mr. Pedraza is saying that you will be okay with that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And what's the rationale for the denial of C2?
On C3.
C3. I'm sorry. What is the rationale for denial of C3?
Noise.
And C2, if they want more options?
Well, my understanding, and I'm here to correct me, sir, but my understanding, Mr. Pedraza's first intention was to open an event center. And so there's no sufficient parking for the event center as we speak. We would have to, he would have to do a condition use permit on a residential lot on the R1 in the back to be able to accommodate parking for an event center. However, the events usually happen before, after working hours, and so that's when the residents came in opposing, having concerns about traffic, you know, after hours.
Well, let's go ahead and, let me ask again that we do have, we do have a motion and a second to deny the C3 and approve the C2. We still have the motion and the second?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Although in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. So it's approved for a C2. Have we closed the public hearing?
Have we closed the public hearing?
Yes. Uh, C, item C is forty-five seventy, uh, ordinance forty-five seventy- seventy-eight.
Is that correct, Anna?
Pardon me?
On the, um, on the ordinance?
On one point one B?
Yes.
Forty-five seventy-seven.
Okay.
That's the one we approved?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And, and the other ones, is it gonna be forty-five seventy-eight?
Yes, sir.
On both?
And forty-five seventy-nine.
Forty-five seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine. Okay. Item, item C.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item one point one C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and, and on-site consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Mission Event Center. The address is two hundred North Sherry Road, Lot One, Mission Event Center subdivision, which is unrecorded. The property is owned C-three, and the applicant is the City of Mission. And if the Council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance and the red zoning of the property. On November fifteen, two thousand seventeen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located twelve hundred feet east of Sherry Road along the north side of Convention Center Boulevard. The proposed forty thousand square foot building will be used for a conference center to host both corporate and social events. Some of these events will include business meetings, conferences, trade shows, special performances, weddings, reunions, birthdays, et cetera. The hours of operation will be from Monday through Sunday, from six AM until two AM. Uh, parking and landscaping, although they're not there, will be meeting city codes. Uh, there are some single-family residences within three hundred feet, uh, to the east of the business, so we will need a waiver of the three hundred foot spacing requirement. There was no public opposition during the Planning and Zoning Commission. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for two years from the issuance of the TABC permit and waiver of the three hundred foot requirement to the nearest residence. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item one point one C is now before you.
Anybody in favor, against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? Um, the recommendation is to adopt ordinance forty-five seventy-eight and also to adopt ordinance forty-five seventy-nine.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve those two ordinances? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion, carries. Item D?
Item D, Mayor. Um, item one point one D is a request for a conditional use permit for the sale and on-site consumption of alcoholic beverages for Senor Mostacho at fifteen twelve East Expressway eighty-three. Uh, this is lots three and four of Stewart Plaza, Phase One subdivision. This is at the, at the corner of Stewart and, uh, Expressway eighty-three. Um, Mayor Council, on this particular item, I did have a chance to speak to the applicant this morning, and he did, uh, divulge to me that, uh, his intent is to open a bar instead of a restaurant. So, being that we had seen this item for a restaurant, uh, that's what he had applied for on his TABC license, uh, but we learned today that that is really not the case, that he's got more of the intentions of opening up a bar, which is gonna sell food, but the primary source of the revenues will be the sale of alcohol. So, being that it was kind of misleading, the way that their application was submitted, we have to go a different route and approve both the bar component and the sale of alcohol, not just the sale of alcohol. So, I did speak to the applicant, and he is, um, requesting that we take no action on this item.
Um, we do need, we'll just take no action on him?
That's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
We'll go on to item, um, E?
Item E is, uh, a public hearing for preliminary and final plat approval of amended Crystal Estates, uh, Phase Two subdivision. Uh, this is an eight point zero five acres out of lots twenty-seven dash two west addition to Sherry Land subdivision. The property is owned R-one, and the developer is D and G and G and G Investments LLC. The engineer is B I G Engineering. On August twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this preliminary and final plat approval of amended Crystal Estates Phase Two. The subject site is at the northeast corner of Los Ebanos and Rebecca Street. Um, Mayor Council, this is a subdivision that had already been approved. However, um, this is a replat because there was five lots that are on the north side of the subdivision that requested to have access through the rear of the property, being lots one and five. So what the developer did is he hired his engineer to do a replat. Everything stays the same. All the infrastructure is already in place. All the utilities are already in place. There's houses that have already been sold. The only thing that we're amending here today is that we're allowing lots one and five to have a rear access through the back of their properties. There was no public opposition during the P and Z, uh, meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item one point one E is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? This is an all thirty, thirty-lots subdivision.
That's correct.
Everybody else has signed over?
Yes, uh, Mayor, that was the reason this plat was approved by P and Z in August, but they hadn't obtained all the signatures until now. So that's why we waited until now to bring it in front of the city council.
That's correct. We want to have all the signatures.
I move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion, carries. Item F? This is, uh-
Mr. Benson?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council.
Forty-five eighty?
Item point one F is discussion and action amending Chapter ninety-eight of the subdivision, section ninety-eight dash one forty-four of Mission Code of Ordinances to allow the usage of park fund, park zone funds with city council approval for regional recreational sites. Adoption ordinance number-
Forty-five eighty?
Forty-five eighty. Uh, both the Parks Recreation Board and the Planning and Zoning, uh, Board recommend this approval to reduce the acreage for regional park sites, uh, has, to reduce it down from fifty acres to fifteen acres. Uh, the regional park land will be, will be comprised of a minimum of six amenities, such as baseball fields, basketball courts, tennis courts, soccer fields, playground, nature areas, et cetera. Uh, this ordinance will allow the usage of park zone funds with city council approval for ra, regional recreational sites. Staff and city manager recommend this approval. This is a public hearing. Item one point one F is now before you.
The recommendation is to go ahead and approve ordinance, um, forty-five eighty. Do we have any comments from anybody in, in the public? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to approve ordinance forty-five eighty. We need a motion for that.
More to approve.
Second, Mayor.
Do we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against motion, carries.
Thank you.
Uh, two point one, two point zero is disposition of minutes, and we have the city council meeting. They have a head on November the thirteenth of twenty seventeen. Um, we do need, um-
More to approve, Mayor.
Motion.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion, carries. Item three point one, um, we need to acknowledge the receipt of minutes for Planning and Zoning Commission on October the twenty-fifth of twenty seventeen, and also Spirit Memorial Library on October seventeenth of twenty seventeen. We do need a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve the acknowledged receipt of minutes of both of those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion, carries. Four point zero is the approval and authorize the homestead exemption variance of, uh, one point eight acre tract of land out of, uh, Lot two ninety-two on the John Sherry subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item four point one is a homestead exemption variance of a one point zero eight acre tract of land of Lot two ninety-two, John H. Sherry subdivision. The property is owned agriculture, AOI. The applicant is Everardo Sustaita Moreno. On November fifteen, two thousand seventeen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this homestead exemption variance request. The subject site is located five hundred twenty-five feet west of Glasscock Road along the north side of Two Mile Road. Uh, Mayor Council has, on October, or November tenth, two thousand fourteen, the council approved the homestead exemption variance, which allows people to build their homes, um, if that's gonna be their primary home without having to hire an engineer and go through the whole subdivision process. This is what, uh, Mr. Sustaita is planning on doing. This is gonna be his primary residence. Uh, all utilities are along Two Mile Road. The only thing that the city is requesting is that he dedicate an additional twenty-five feet of right-of-way to Two Mile Road. There was no public opposition during the meeting. Uh, staff is recommending approval, subject to the approval of the, uh, homestead exemption requirements, which, uh, requires them to sign an affidavit that gets recorded at the courthouse, and the dedication of the twenty-five feet of right-of-way along Two Mile Road. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item four point one is now before you.
Do we need a motion to, do we need a motion to, to approve the homestead exemption?
More to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion, carries. Item, um, four point two?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item four point two is a preliminary plat approval of Villa I L Centenario subdivision, being a re-subdivision of eight point eight five three acres of Lot one sixty-one, John H. Sherry subdivision, and Lot one, Braxelis Garza subdivision. The property is owned R-one, and the developers, Sakretz, Gadigos, with the engineer being Meldon and Hunt. On November fifteen, two thousand seventeen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this preliminary and final plat approval. The proposed subdivision is located on the east side of Stewart Road, a thousand feet north of Trinity Road. The average size lots, uh, for this thirty-six lot subdivision is eighty-three hundred square feet. And, uh, all the proposed water, streets, sewer, and drainage improvements will meet city code. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with the street alignment policy, paying, paying the capital sewer recovery fees and park fees, and paying the street widening fee for Stewart. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item one, item four point two is now before you.
We do need a motion to approve the preliminary approval, um, the recommendation on both zoning, planning and zoning and staff.
More to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion, carries. Four point three?
Thank you, Mayor Council. On item four point three, I did receive, uh, a call this, uh, this morning from South Texas Infrastructure Group. And, uh, the engineer for this project is requesting that we take no action. Uh, he will be increasing the number of lots by three. So we, we will, we will be taking this item back to Planning and Zoning Commission for their approval.
Okay, four point four?
Yes, Mayor Council. Item four point four is the request to cancel the second December regular city council meeting, uh, which is scheduled for December twenty-fifth on Christmas Day of twenty seventeen, and to reschedule the December eleventh city council meeting to December the eighteenth of twenty seventeen.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion, carries. Four point five, Mr. Belmaris?
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Bring before you item four point five, authorization to work bid to Marvel OOC for the Anseldual Highway wastewater and water trunk lines, Phase Two. Staff received seven bid responses, award, uh, recommendation to Marvel OOC, lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications in the amount of three million four hundred forty-three thousand eight ninety-four point eighty-one. The city will be reimbursed, um, through the, uh, for the construction cost by a tax increment and reinvestment zone, uh, for the reimbursement agreement approved by the city council on October twenty-third, twenty seventeen. Uh, before you, uh, staff, city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, but the question that I'm asking is that the bid came in completely when, when you got the bid?
Yes, sir.
The three point four?
Yes, sir.
You had advantage, you know?
The bonds and all the documentation came in.
Yeah, 'cause, uh, we had a call that, that they did not have the bond, the bond.
We verified that the bond was there.
The, where they are at the same time you got the bid?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion, carries. Item four point six?
Item four point six, authorizes purchase of furniture for City Mission Event Center from Office Depot via TCPN Cooperative Contract Number R-one-four-two-two-one-two. Staff seeking authorization to purchase furniture for City Mission Event Center from Office Depot via the, uh, R-fourteen-twenty-two-one-two. Work space interiors by Office Depot coordinated the interior design and furniture layout to maximize space and installation of furniture. Attaches a proposal in the amount of four hundred twenty-eight thousand four seventeen point eighty-nine for furniture delivery and installation. Staff recommendations authorization to purchase furniture from Office Depot.
Need a motion to approve?
More to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve? Estimated cost of four hundred twenty-eight thousand four hundred seventeen and eighty-nine cents. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion, carries. Four point seven?
Four point seven, authorizes purchase of kitchen equipment for City Mission Event Center from Ace Mark Restaurant Supply via Byboard Cooperative Contract Number five-one-nine dash sixteen. Kitchen equipment, equipment will be used for functions and events hosted at the event center. Staff opted to purchase kitchen equipment via Byboard Cooperative to apply cost savings and have the contractor do the installation in accordance with the architect's layout. Estimated cost of two hundred and eighty-two thousand seven eighty-one for the equipment and delivery. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We need, um, a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion, carries.
Thank you.
This, four point eight?
Uh, yes, Mayor, City Council. Item four point eight is the approval of an agreement regarding the construction and repayment of costs for the City of Mission Event Center. The City of Mission has determined that the most significant amount of, uh, means of financing the cost of the event center was through certificates of obligation. The Mission EDC has agreed to reimburse the City of Mission for the payment of financing of the design and construction costs in the amount of one million dollars per year until the debt has been fully paid. The EDC has purchased land adjacent to the, uh, Mission Event Center, where the EDC will agree to sell the EDC property and use the excess proceeds from the sale to further reduce the principal of the Mission Event Center's debt. The repayment agreement was approved by the EDC Board on November the sixteenth, twenty seventeen. We are seeking approval of this item.
Do we need a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve? Um, the recommendation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion, carries.
Thank you.
Four point nine, Mr. Weller?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item four point nine is the approval of the certified twenty-seventeen tax rule totals as per section twenty-six nine E of the Texas Property Code. Total taxable value is four billion one hundred and thirty-four million three hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars, and the total tax levy is nineteen million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-seven cents, which, uh, of that amount, sixteen point six million is for MNO, and three point three is for INS. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion, carries. Four ten?
Item four point ten is the tax collection approval for the month of October, two thousand seventeen. The total tax levy is twenty million sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. An amount of collections as of October thirtieth was a hundred and one thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents, which is point fifty-one percent of the tax levy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion, carries. Four eleven?
Item four eleven is approval of the attached budget amendments. We have five budget amendments.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The first budget amendment is the, in the utility fund, it's revenues of four point nine, four million nine hundred and fifty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and expenditures of the same amount, which is to allocate funds for the Anseldua Highway wastewater and water trunk lines. This project is being reimbursed by TERS and was approved by their board on October tenth, two thousand seventeen. Then we have an amendment for the CDBG fund, which is revenues of a hundred and eighty thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars and expenditures of a hundred and eighty thousand six forty-three, which is to allocate the funds from the two thousand sixteen block grant for CDBG. These are the remaining funds that need to be carried over to the current year to complete the housing rehabilitation and reconstruction projects. Then we have the PD State Sharing Fund, which are expenditures of seventy-one thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. This is to allocate their fund balance, which is remaining at the end of the year, which consists of forfeited contraband from state's attorneys and governed by the Texas Code of Criminal Procedures. Funds are used for law enforcement purposes. We have the PD Federal Sharing Fund, expenditures of five hundred and eighty thousand and sixty-nine dollars, which is also their fund balance at the end of the year, which we need to budget, which consists of equitable shared forfeited cash, property proceeds and interest from the federal government and governed by the Department of Justice and the Department of the Treasury Equitable Sharing Program. Funds are to be used for law enforcement purposes. And finally, we have a budget amendment in the Hotel Malta Fund of expenditures of seven hundred and eleven thousand and one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. These are funds which will be allocated for the purchase of office equipment and furniture for the Mission Event Center. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
City manager recommending the approval. Would you, do we need a motion?
More to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Four twelve?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item four point twelve, approval of work authorization number thirty-two with LNG Engineering related to the Mission Event Center project. Construction material testing for Mission Event Center. Proposed remaining work is estimated at thirty thousand eight dollars with thirty cents. Additional services on as needed basis will require city manager approval. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Do we need a motion to approve the recommendation?
More to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Four thirteen, Mr. Meats?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item four thirteen, I'm seeking authorization for the purchase of patio furniture for the seed building located at eight oh one North Bryan Road via the State National Joint Powers Alliance Board from Palmer Hamilton O C via authorized vendor Texas Wilson in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents.
The recommendation from the city manager and staff, we do need a motion to approve the recommendation?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Um, we do not have, do you have any comments?
No, Mayor, no comments.
I have no comments, so we do need a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to adjourn? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.